This conference will now be recorded.
Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is the consent agenda item. A B M C, the approval of the minutes bills paid in approving the city manager's appointment of Rance Quinn as the chief of police.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda items. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, Councilman Shriver made the motion. Councilman Adcox made the second. Will the clerk please call them?
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. Well, congratulations. And then we'll go ahead and have the swearing in.
Can't do it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll announce Rance Quinn as the chief of police. Please stand by city clerk. It's for today, our job, and duty, right?
I am Rance Quinn.
I am Rance Quinn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and the law of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Kansas.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Kansas.
And the ordinance of the city of Edwardsville.
And the ordinance of the city of Edwardsville.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Devolving upon me as a police officer.
Devolving upon me as a police officer.
Of the city of Edwardsville so help me God.
Of the city of Edwardsville so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda is requests or comments from the public. We have a lot of new faces tonight, so I'll just remind everyone, when you come up, if we have some public comments, you'll stick your name and address. You'll have three minutes to share your comments with us. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a little hint to start wrapping it up. And just as a reminder, because sometimes it feels a little bit awkward, we can't respond back to you since we're not adding items to the agenda tonight, but we're here to listen to what you might have to say. If we have anyone that would like to share with us, the mic is now open.
Come on up, state your name. Address.
I'm Mary Wilson. I'm Mary Wilson. My address is 1728 South 104th Terrace, Williamson Farms subdivision. I'm here to speak in regards to the sidewalk along the west side of 104th Street from Metropolitan Avenue to the Edwardsville Elementary School. I was here last fall to speak in favor of the sidewalk. I am a walker. I walk this route five to seven days a week, year-round. I have seen that it has been surveyed, so monies have already been spent towards the completion of this sidewalk. Tonight, as in my understanding, the council is preparing to approve the bid for completion. In order to ensure the council that the people in Williamson Farms subdivision are in favor of this sidewalk, I wish to present to you as members of the city council, the petition signed by 153 people. It is our belief that the current lack of sidewalk is an unsafe condition. Many people walk the road in order to complete a walking loop, strewn around our neighborhood. It is unsafe for the walkers and unsafe for the drivers. I feel it is only time before someone is seriously injured. By completing this sidewalk loop by the way, people walk a loop around our neighborhood. There are many who walk daily that are limited and they walk through us. For example, if you're walking and pushing a child or a stroller, you would not walk the roadway of 104th Street. As we have spoken to people regarding this sidewalk, many believe that they had a way to walk along 104th Street and avoid it because they don't feel it is safe. And drivers have stated they are fearful of putting someone in the car. 104th Street is a very busy street at times to draw traffic at the school. And mentioning the school brings up the walkability of our neighborhood. With completion of this sidewalk, children could walk to school daily and safely. Walkers, bikers, runners could safely loop around our neighborhood. And the person pushing that baby stroller could stroll along 104th Street. This sidewalk makes our neighborhood more livable. For those that walk with their help like I do, this completed sidewalk will make a nice one-mile walking loop. And if people able to navigate from the back of the sidewalk along Edwardsville Drive that passed up Sheldon Avenue and not loop around the tip of top of 105th Street and 150th Street Court, exercises could have a vigorous two-and-a-half mile or more walk. With the new housing going in along Highland Drive, any number of others could use this sidewalk to walk the newly established walking loop. At this time, I wish to submit the petitions with 153 signatures to the council to indicate the support to complete this project. It would be noted that as we have been seeking these signatures, only one person has tonight signing it. It is my belief, had we continued, we could have had a lot more people sign this petition. Now, I would like to ask the people who've come with me tonight to support this sidewalk project to please stand up. If the council wishes, each wishing can come up and state their name and address and their support for the completion of this project. It is not a wish, this is not a wish of a few people, but a desire of many in our community. You can see this by the number standing and the number that have signed the petition. Thank you for your time. And I and those standing and those signing the petitions wish for the affirmative vote in favor of the bid for a sidewalk along 104th Street. Thank you. Who would I submit this to, the clerk?
Submit to me and I'll submit to the clerk for your right.
Okay, that's 153 signatures. Do you wish that these other people come forward with their name and address in favor?
It's just up to them. It's over public comments, but I appreciate that information. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the council desire to see the petition?
If you'd like to bring it out behind us, though, we, we went to a lot of-
I live at 1715 South 104th Terrace. So I always thought there should be a sidewalk back, and it's right behind my house. As Mary said, there's a lot of people that walk around there daily, and it's really unsafe. So a sidewalk would be very appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm also in favor. My name is Kenny Lee. I live at 1709 South 104th. My son Owen. And we both are on that street quite a bit, so.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Lawson, and I live at 1841 South 98th Street. Actually, not in Williamson Farms, but I'm also in support of it for the accessibility around the school district or the school. I thought several times, like, we definitely need some sidewalks around here. I think it would even open up some opportunities for our school-age children, even of us who don't live in Williamson Farms.
Thank you.
I'm Ann Burris, flyers, and I live at 1742 South 104th Terrace, Williamson Farms. I'm also in favor of that sidewalk because 104th Street is, they just fly over those hills. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Woodbury. I'm at 717 North 7th Street. I fully support Ms. Mary's delightful dialogue that she brought this evening. I'm not very prepared, but I can support what she's stating on multiple reasons. There's new construction going in at 4th Street and Highland Drive, Highland Ridge subdivision, supporting 50 new addresses coming into our community. Our city is requiring those 50 addresses to, in fact, have a sidewalk. So their sidewalk will be going to nowhere if our community does not continue to support sidewalk growth. They will be a stone's throw from the sidewalk going up the hill to the school and then the one going to the west of Williamson Farms, and that's it. So supporting this sidewalk would just be fantastic, not only for the people currently residing here, but the growth we're trying to get to come to our community. Also, as a member of the PTO at the elementary school, the PTO is taking funds next year to support a paint the pavement project at the school and redoing the blacktop out there to increase the children's activity, four-square, redoing the basketball goal lines. I mean, I could go on and on on the activities that we're going to be putting on the pavement. We do not have a very large park, if any, north of K-32. Our city park is on the south side. So having access coming to the school from all directions and putting our community on a link, a sidewalk link, will allow all the kids living on the north side of 32 to have access to school playgrounds in summer, bike riding, the massive amount of blacktop back there that's getting ready to get an overhaul. So all wonderful things happen when the community just continues to grow and invest back in itself. Thank you. I think I said everything on the heels of Mary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Skip Dobbs, 1521 South 105th Street, Edwardsville. I'm in support of this. My wife uses it with our dogs a lot, and I've got 26 years as Parks and Recreation, 20 of those as a director, and it really enhances your community when you do have the sidewalks, the paths, the trails. It's a public safety issue for the community, so I'm not sure why anybody would want to vote against this. The only thing I'm concerned about is where you're going to cross from east to west. It's just making sure that that's, because that's all hill and things, and whether or not we have it marked appropriately for the traffic that comes through there. And I would also encourage you to use the riverfront. We have a great asset down there, and that's kind of going to waste. And I know there's been, what would you call it, your master plan that you did for that area. I have questions about that, but anyway, that would be great to create that as a loop so that the whole community can utilize this, because that's what we're looking for, is to get people out, help their wellness, and so I encourage this.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to share before we close public comments?
Yes.
Rhonda Smiley, 10526 Richland Avenue. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My concern is about item seven on today's agenda, which says the governing body shall consider Charter Ordinance 2024-01 and either entertain a motion, a second to accept, deny, or table the item. I learned about this issue at Friday, 3:27, when the hot shot came out. And then I was able to read the agenda items sometime after 5 o'clock on Friday. I didn't actually do it until Sunday, but that was the first notice that I had that we were going to have an ordinance in front of the council today to try to change our entire form of government. Right now, we have what is considered in the political science world, the governmental world, a weak mayor, strong council form of government. And this ordinance change, as I understand it, would change to a strong mayor, weak council form of government. What I understand is that each of you was elected under the weak mayor, strong council form. And I see the mayor shaking her head, but I've been here since 1992, and the mayor has been exercising rights of a weak mayor. It doesn't mean they're weak, doesn't mean they're not influential, but this issue came up before this council because the mayor vetoed the budget that was agreed to by the council. And there were people on the council and otherwise who didn't think the mayor had the power to do that. Typically, in the weak mayor form of government, they wouldn't have a lot of powers to veto things. But they're set forth in the ordinances of the statutes, and this ordinance that's come through tonight has very little information about why we want to change that government, why we would want to have people who were elected on the former power structure be able to just continue on in new power structure without a say of a legal. And I have not seen any other information about this. So that's my big first concern, is lack of notice and lack of explanation. And I know that Mark, the city manager, tried to explain in a eight-and-a-half or so memo in the agenda packet what this issue is all about and the ordinances and statutes that interplay and cause us to maybe consider a change of form of government. However, you know, we didn't all see those until the agenda packet came out. And I, even being a nerd, did not have time to read the statutes and the ordinances and compare what this modification would be. And in fact, the package doesn't have a striped-through version to show what the ordinance is now and what it would become, and that would be much more reefer for me and probably everybody else who's going to read an ordinance. But anyway, so I know that city manager was trying to take legal advice from our city attorney, who prepared some information for you folks, because I've been at meetings where that was talked about. That also has not been made available to us, what the legal advice was as to how you do this or what the powers are.
The doctor, I put up the-
Yeah, what the powers are of the mayor. And so for that reason, I would suggest that perhaps we should have more information. Ballotpedia is-
Oh, I'm sorry, you really, even three minutes are up.
Oh, you didn't give me the, oh, that's what I was-
Yeah, I did, and you might have been looking down, I'm sorry.
I couldn't read it.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, well, anyway, I would suggest that that should be denied or at the very least tabled while we get some more information to our citizens.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And thanks for playing along. Appreciate it.
Any other comments before we close the public comments tonight? Nope? Okay. And as mentioned earlier, we don't react or respond right away to public comments. So some things that were brought up during the comments, whether sidewalk or otherwise, may be addressed later during the meeting for clarification. And so we will keep moving forward to item number three, which is the governing body to consider planning and zoning committee's recommendation to approve the preliminary plan for 9711 Wood End Road.
Before we get started on that, I'd like to make a motion to table this and table four because of the information that just came to light at 3 o'clock. Have not had time to review it. That is for these two projects.
I'm in agreement with that. We got that information at 3 o'clock this afternoon. It was very light in the packet that we received on Friday. Wasn't any kind of time to review it whatsoever. I'd like to second that motion to table this item.
Any other questions or comments?
Will that have any severe impacts on anything?
What I believe you received late, which wasn't included in the packet, it was just stored in a separate folder, it just didn't get included in the distribution, is the action the planning commission took and their recommendation. It's all that material. It's all summated in the staff memo from the city planner. That's all just summated in that particular one. So that's supporting documentation of the action that they took, again, summated into the staff agenda, sorry, agenda memo.
Right, and for clarification, I believe all of the information was in our packet. It was just the planning commission response, just additional information.
I believe that's correct.
But the timing, we're okay as far as this, if we were to table it, for instance, it wouldn't mess up the progress or timeline for the people involved?
If we tabled it until the next meeting, I don't believe it'll interrupt that. City planner?
We have, we have to consider this evening.
Okay. First of all, the question maybe is of procedure, how we're governed in this process. So that first question is, does tabling this item do anything in the progress and the process somewhat by ordinance?
Yes.
So we held, I'm sorry, we held our public hearing. That will not be a part of this tonight. And so we would have to do the additional publications.
Okay.
Things of that nature, signage. I think the concern might be with the applicant who's here this evening, so if you'd like to hear his side.
Mayor, it's your choice if you want to hear from the applicant.
I think since they made the trip to be here and they were on the agenda, I think that would be fair. And then, at least just in case you can't make it to the next weekend for me this evening.
I think procedurally, Mayor, that you have a motion and a second, and you're in discussion, so it's very appropriate.
Okay. Do you have a question, though, if this would be related to item three or item four? So is this the, are you with the Wood End property or the Cod?
I'm here for item three, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And then state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Matthew Smith, and I'm with Anchor Construction on behalf of Fastenal Company. We're located at 7121 Grape Road in Granger, Indiana. So yes, I did fly down here from Indiana this morning. I guess, to answer your question, I guess it would delay us a month if this were to be tabled a month, which would be unfortunate. So I would be happy to answer any questions you have now if that would help alleviate any concerns you might have. This is for Fastenal Company. It's an expansion of their existing use on their existing property. That's already been covered previously in previous development plans. And so they've been planning on this future expansion for quite some time, and it's now coming to fruition now. Be roughly doubling the size of the building on that smaller lot on Wood End Road there. Like I said, existing use being expanded, nothing more intense, nothing concerning in that way. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have along those lines. I would prefer that we address the items tonight if the body still chooses.
I'm not opposed to your project, because I'm familiar with it when I was on the planning and zoning board. I'm opposed to the process. I mean, you know, we should have gotten this in the packet Thursday or Friday.
No, I believe, and Bradley, you might be able to answer this a little bit more. The information that was sent to us today was more concerning the property on Cod Drive. Was there anything that was left out of the background that we didn't have already from last week?
So typically in the past, we'd included that planning commission packet with the council memo itself. In this case, that was just omitted from what you all received on Monday. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but both of those planning commission memos were provided to you today.
Okay. I think what would be, I think maybe what would be a better idea is acting on them one at a time, since we have an applicant here, and we could consider tabling both. But I think that because these are separate agenda items, it would just be a little bit more in order, too. If we're going to table one, table item three. If we're going to table one, four, let's table that separately. But that way, just in case, we have comfort with one project or the other, given that information that we do have, we could move forward or not.
Yes, that's appropriate, take one at a time, because you need to act on both of them.
But the motion was for both.
Yeah.
So you could do a motion to divide the questions.
Would someone just need to make that motion? Or?
Yes, to divide the que- Or you could do a substitute motion if there's, if they allow it.
I make a motion to divide the questions.
Second.
Okay. So we had an original motion with Councilman Bishop, the second was with Councilman Mullen.
I didn't second anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, we never had a second, so we don't need to divide the original question.
They did.
They did second.
They did.
They were seconded on cable. Yes.
The first motion.
Councilman Mullen, just Councilman Mullen.
Well, he just made a, what are you doing here? He just made another motion.
I just said Councilman-
What happened to the first motion?
So I said Councilman Bishop made an original motion. That Councilman sec, that Councilman Mullen seconded. And then I was going to say Councilman Mullen made a motion to divide the question. Councilman Shriver seconded, so that our county, or city clerk would have that all in our minutes. And so now we'll call to vote.
You have to act on the first motion first.
Yeah, I think I'm, since it's been seconded, it's on the floor. The motion to divide the question would be out of order. The-
I would withdraw my first motion. Okay. Too confusing for everybody.
I'll withdraw the second.
Now, if you want to take it one at a time, there would be a motion to table item three or four, whichever you want to take first, and then it would be a second, and then you could take that up, and then you could proceed to the second.
Do we need to resend the second set of questions in second?
I think they're probably out of order.
Okay.
Based on my advice.
For clarification, you could have a motion to approve this.
On item three?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve item number three.
We have another motion on the floor still. Mr. Mullen made a motion. We have to, and there was a second, we have to act on.
All right, you, maybe to resend the motion.
I'll resend my motion, yeah.
I'll resend my second.
We're putting my 4H knowledge to test tonight.
So now we have a motion for item three on the agenda to approve. And we were waiting for a second.
I second that motion.
Okay. Now, we're just going to start from the end, and that was Councilman Adcox made the motion to approve. Councilman Mullen made the second. Will the clerk please call them?
I'd like some discussion on that, please. I do not appreciate getting information on that three hours before. Fastenal's been there for a long, long time, and they've been a super, super industry to have in Edwardsville. They pay their share of their taxes. They do a wonderful job. There's been issues with them before on hard surface parking. They've always complied with that. They've, they had a pipeline that they had to build overhead, elevator to go across to avoid a pipeline. They've always been extremely good with what they've done for us. The planning commission and the city council has always had access to all of the plans, all the development process that was going on. The council right now is being eliminated from the process of looking at that stuff. We've had three hours to look at that. I cannot vote in favor of just rubber stamping the approval on that without having that information in progress.
And did you have concerns from the original?
I have not seen, I have not seen the plans that the city planner gave to us at 3 o'clock this afternoon. And it takes a little bit of time to look at that stuff.
I was just wondering, just because Bradley's here and says Fastenal, if you had questions regarding the plan that you did-
Not until I can look at it and see what it's doing.
So you didn't look at the original?
I haven't had time to, not when you get it at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, no.
Did you have questions about what was sent to you?
I do not have questions about it. That's an easy answer to come up with.
Did anyone who reviewed the material have questions about the material that was in the package?
No.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please move? Adcox?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Mullen?
No.
Mayor? Yes. Shriver?
Yes.
Item number four, the governing body to consider planning and zoning committee's recommendation to renew a special use permit for excavation and material extraction at 9920 Cod Drive and adopter's resolution 2024, finalizing this agreement.
So we're moving on to item four?
Number four.
Okay. No discussion on this one?
Done.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is a request for a special use permit, I-920 Cod Drive. On February 5, 2024, the applicant and owner, Magnetic Construction, filed a concept plan and special use permit renewal application related to approximately 9.64 acres of vacant land located in I-920 Cod Drive within the C2 commercial retail zoning district. The applicant has requested the special use permit for the purpose of extracting material to be used for the 98th Street Road project and others nearby. In addition, the grading plan is intended to address existing steep grades in order to create a low-sloping topography that is more conducive to commercial development as intended by the zoning district. The proposed use is subject to acquiring a special use permit, and any future use of the property is subject to further review and approval per C2 district regulations in the site architectural plan review process. In light of these requirements, the applicant was required to submit conceptual plan of the entire property along with the excavation and soil mitigation plan that's shown on the screen before you. The purpose of this concept plan is to demonstrate how the property would be left in the condition that would accommodate that future development scenario for the property. All grading and hauling for this use is to occur Monday through Saturday. hauling for this use is to occur Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The number of trucks hauling from the site will vary from day to day depending on the need and schedule of nearby projects needing soil. In an effort to preserve the local roadways and avoid any conflict with higher density residential uses that exist along 98th Street, trucks hauling materials to the 98th Street project site will utilize K-32 to northbound 435 where it would exit off of Kansas Avenue. On April 17, 2024, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to this item, where staff and the applicant were the only people who spoke on the item at the public hearing. The planning commission recommended approval of the special use permit with the conditions listed in the attached resolution and shown here on the screen. As I mentioned, this is a application to renew an SUP that was approved in years previous. The conditions listed on here were slightly modified to address past concerns, including the hours of operation, the proactive monitoring on site, and the requirement to, if anything were to be spilled off on K-32, the applicant would have four hours to address that. At the planning commission meeting, they had no issue with that, and they will have a streets cleaner on site when any operations are going on. There's also a condition to provide any updated state documentation for the length of service permit and the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is currently being reviewed by members of our public works and our city engineer to ensure that any grading or excavation has, will not be affecting any neighboring property owners. In closing, staff supports these recommendations of the planning commission for approval. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Is KDHE okay with this?
They've already included some of that documentation with their stormwater pollution prevention plan. That'll be approved once the, that item has been reviewed by city staff.
That was listed as a condition, wasn't it?
Yes.
What about KDOT? I don't see them mentioned anywhere.
So the, I think it's on item number two, are those state and federal regulations for that?
Oh, you didn't have KDOT in there.
So that would include the access along K-32, that being a state highway advantaged by KDOT. And we will need to ensure that not only are they aware of that activity is going on at that location, to ensure that their access permit is still up to date and valid.
How long have they done this?
So I believe the first one was in 2018. And then they renewed that in 2020 with something going on. I think they were able to do as much as they would like during that time.
And to your knowledge, had there been any problems, violations, whatever?
So I think with the 2022 approved SUP permit, those were addressed and included in this list of conditions as well.
So yes, the answer to the question is we had issues. They were addressed in the reinsurance of the permit, correct?
Gotcha.
And they they made corrective action. So so far, we've been satisfied with the conditions of the property.
Yeah, the torrential down, down before we had that time. They came right out and fixed it right there.
I remember.
Blowed the road.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, they've been good about keeping mud off the road.
Exactly.
Mayor, a question from staff to the city planner. Can you explain one of the purposes of the of the excavation, what they plan to do with the material?
Absolutely, yeah. As I mentioned, they'll be using vast majority of the material extracted from this location for the 98th Street project. So that kind of helps on that end in terms of, you know, if there are any issues, they're going to be in town working on another project. And they're not too far away to address those issues. So and then speaking with members of the public works, reaching out to our engineer, I don't think there is any thing glaring or concern related to the stormwater pollution prevention. There's a few items that still need to be addressed, getting the approvals from KDHE, ensuring that KDOT is aware, things like that. But that'll all be addressed before we can issue that length of service permit. So.
These are all of the conditions in? Eight of them?
And then this is a question that I had previously, but just for clarification, special use permits, should there become an issue, can be removed if needed, if the property becomes?
Yeah, I mean, it's by understanding that this can be revoked at any time, whether it's one of these conditions of having been met or other issues that no longer. Yeah. But there is a process that we would need to devote to revoke that permit. Again, I don't think there was any issues with our last one. So but that is always an option.
That was one question I had when I saw the administration, the administrative review after one year, just to make sure that if they weren't compliant, that we could remove that special use if needed. But thankfully, they've been doing a good job so far. So that's promising.
Just to clarify, this is a project that's been going on since 2018? And the city council in the past has approved all this?
Yes. Along the way, as I mentioned, there were some, our conditions that were added along with each one. I think in this case, the only modifications were the hours of operation and some modifications to the timeline of when those items need to be addressed, if there is any material in the roadway, or like that. So just kind of typing that out.
Any other questions or comments?
I make a motion we approve that.
Item four?
Yes.
Second.
There's a motion from Councilman Mullen, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Shriver? Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is consider a bid award for phase one of the 104th Street Extension Project.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, council, item number five is the award of bid consideration for the 104th Street sidewalk extension. We've heard a number of the audience clearly in favor of this project, have been excited about it since we started talking about it. We did go for bids. We've done a lot of reconstruction engineering and all the things. And we had an engineer's estimate, but we felt it best to see what someone would build this for. Let's get more accurate numbers so we can be confident in what we're going forward with. And that result is that we had four bidders, very competitive. And you will notice in the background information that I point out that the lowest number bid, the lowest bid of $212,978 was from Legacy Underground. There's a $22,500 error in that particular bid. We've had some experience with this particular company. It wasn't all terrible, I would say. There was a couple of issues that were of concern. So we thought it best to review the next lowest bidder, and that bidder was $218,342, is the CAAS Construction Company. Does a lot of this type of work around. They're very capable, good reputation. They have the means and the resources to complete the job within the proposed amount. And therefore, we felt that that was the best and lowest bid. And therefore, staff recommends that you approve and award that bid, and you authorize the city manager to enter into the contract with CAAS Construction for $218,342.
If awarded the bid, Hudson, could they start?
So we have placed a timeline in the bid package that upon getting all of the documents, we give a notice to proceed, and they have to proceed within 10 days. And we hope that is right after the end of school and right before school starts. That's kind of the timeframe. Now, they're going to move from the south to the north, so towards the cemetery, if you will, from the school. And what that does for us, if time somehow, they're struggling with whatever it might be, that they will be at the north end of that project and out of the way of the school. So that's, that's the whole, kind of our intent strategy wise. There was mention there, and I might comment on now, that where we're going to cross and some of that, I think, may be a concern. There's the crest of the hill that's right across from the driveway. There will be a very well marked crosswalk. That crosswalk, as proposed by the school, will be manned by the school when it's, when the school is active. And there will be a warning beacon at that, at that area right there. It'll be very visible. And then there will also be a second crossing at the very north driveway of the school. Somewhat as a quick courtesy crossing, won't be manned, but it'll be properly marked. Won't include the beacon, however, it's at the low piece of part of that hill. And so you can go right into the parking lot. And there's a, there's somewhat of a walking area that they have and that sort of thing. And they may have some other plans to expand their internal pedestrian mobility access in that area, for lack of a term. So that, so far, the plan is, we also, as you know, we did have lots of discussion about the Williamson Farms connection. We have an easement there. We're in full discussions about not only just moving those fences that are on the property, that we will rebuild them and put them after, we've been asked to put up one temporary fence for animals, dogs, and that sort of thing. And so we'll do that as part of the project. And then that will leave enough width that we can get the sidewalk in and put it, put it in fairly quickly. And therefore, from the internal workings, if you will, of Williamson Farms, the streets and the sidewalks they have, you can come right off of that, right through there, and right to the school if that's what you want, or right on those sidewalks, going north or south. And we'll be connecting, that's 104th Street Extension, because if you know that area, the sidewalk just simply ends at the southern driveway of the school. But that also is, if you see where they built Highland Ridge, their sidewalks are right there. So their internal sidewalks will then connect, and therefore, we're going to keep going north, and that will connect up to the cemetery where you can walk around. And then hopefully, one of these days, there's a phase two plan, and maybe we can get that extending even farther north. So that's the plan. So we recommend that you, that you move forward and allow me to sign this contract with this particular company.
And this is something that I think is, is just a slam dunk as far as our community's concerned. We have great resident support from this project. We have support from the superintendent of the school district, who is really excited to have a safe way for kids to walk to school. We've heard from residents that say that a lot of our community who don't want to cross K-32 on foot can walk up there and use the Fastenal Extension Trail after hours. And so it's just such a benefit to the community. In addition to that being, with ARPA funds, it's not even a burden on our taxpayers. And so I just am so supportive of this, and really excited to have it on tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to award the bid for project EDV-2023-01 to CAAS Construction not to exceed 218,342?
I don't think we presented it that way because there could be change orders. Just, we never know.
Well, award the bid to CAAS Construction.
My second.
We have a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Mullen. Will the clerk please call?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Item number six on tonight's agenda is consider 2023 financial statement and report of the city's independent certified public accounts.
Mayor, thank you. I will call on Sean Gordon to present, and he's a timely individual. He made some other meetings and came right over. He's been presenting probably all evening, I bet. But he has a really good report for you, and we're happy to have him here presenting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's just a minute.
The audit report can do that.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Gordon with Gordon CPA. We performed the 2023 audit of the city, so I'll go through that audit report that is in front of you. We'll start with pages one through two. This is called the Independent Auditor's Report. Here we discuss a variety of items, including the opinion that we issued the city's financial statements for the year ended 12/31/2023. We also discuss management and the council's responsibilities for the city's financial statements and a few more of our responsibilities as well. As I said, the opinion paragraph, this is the most important paragraph in this independent auditor report. And that is on page one, the third paragraph down, you'll see an italicized heading called unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. This paragraph says that the highest and cleanest opinion we can issue this, the city under state guidelines, we did issue the city. So it reflects very well on the financial and internal control management of the city's finances during that time period. Flipping forward to page three, this is called the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. Here you'll see in the left-hand column, all of the different funds of the city. And then for each of those funds, the beginning cash, receipts, expenditures, and then ending cash. You'll see at the very bottom of that right-hand column, that the city reported about $10.245 million on hand as of 12/31/2023. The next section, fourth, starts on page four and runs through page 10. This section is called the notes to the financial statements. And here we discuss a variety of items, including accounting policies that the city follows, the different types of funds that the city reports on, budgetary information, information on long-term debt, involvement in the CAPERS and KPNF retirement program. Like I said, very, a variety of items discussed in this section. On page 10, I wanted to point out there was a statutory violation for a budget violation. I saw Mark address that in your agenda packet. So if you have any questions for me on that, please let me know. And then the final section starts on page 11 and runs through page 38. And these are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that you saw presented on page three. Most of these pages have a comparison to the budget that was adopted as well, so you can see how each fund operated compared to the budget for that fund. We had a good audit this year. Mark and Met Hat and then Doug, towards the end, as we were doing our concluding procedures, hopped in and they did a very good job of answering our questions, getting us information that we requested. And there was one auditor's recommendation, and it had to do with some credit card transactions. There are three levels of auditor's recommendations that we can make. This falls under the lowest. So something to just be aware of, no major concern, does not affect any of the financial statement numbers that we audit. With that, any questions for me on our audit report or our audit process?
Could you clarify the credit card concern?
Yeah, there were, so we test credit card transactions, and we randomly selected 25 credit card transactions from 2023 to look at. There were two instances where a receipt could not be located, and there were two instances where sales tax was paid. So our recommendation is always retain those credit cards, receipts, and invoices that you get, and also look where we pay sales tax, because it's not necessary, necessarily in most transactions.
Can you clarify just something for me on page one, paragraph two, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statement referred to the above does not present fairly. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so all audits are based on GAAP basis of accounting, which is a higher level of financial statement and accounting. That would involve tracking fixed asset items, accounts receivable items. It's a much more costly audit, more city staff would be required to be involved in audits. So we're required to say the city doesn't follow a GAAP basis of accounting. So it's, it does not present fairly under GAAP. But that next paragraph down says that the basis that the city does follow, which is called the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide and Regulatory Basis, it does reflect well following that basis of accounting.
Right.
I just had a, oh, like, what question on page 12? In a few of those, it has in brackets where items were under budget when you compare the actual amount, whether it was received or spent. And then we have total receipts for revenues at about $208,000. and eight thousand dollars under a budget. And then when we go to expenditures, it has one point one four six million, and then we have about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar difference when it goes to total expenditures. I'm sorry, skip the one point one four six, that was the contingency. Could you just explain especially that section with the contingency and then the reserve with that under amount?
Yeah, the contingency reserve is usually a budgeting tool that, that cities use in order to have enough cash on hand going into the next fiscal year. So that's what that contingency reserve line is. So the city at the time that the twenty twenty-three budget was prepared had estimated that it would need about one point one million dollars into the next year to continue operating. And what was your other question on that? I'm sorry.
And then when it goes to the one point two nine four, just kind of the summary of the difference.
Yeah, most of that, you can see the departments, some of them went slightly over their budget amount, some of them went slightly under, but most of that one point two nine four million dollars you're looking at is because of that contingency reserve amount.
Yeah, I got one more. On the, the item six on the agenda, I don't know if you have that or not, do you? Well, paragraph one to three, it says this is commonly, we're under, we, we're spending down, it looks like to me, our fund balance, and deficit spending occurred the last three of the last four years. It's not good, is it?
Uh, no.
And this happens because of why?
Well, we over, we underperformed on revenue generation, and we overspent the budget in those years. That's it. You don't have the same amount of money coming in as you're spending. You're spending more than you had revenue. It's very simple.
This would probably be attributed to cutting the budget every single year in the last seven years, correct? Would that help?
Cutting the mill levy or cutting the budget?
Mill levy.
Mill levy. That would, that would, that would affect those numbers that you're looking at, I guess.
That's all I got.
Impact the revenue.
Right, so the revenue, and we've talked about this a little bit, and sorry, because you're standing right in the middle of it, to make you just being in the middle. When we cut a full mill, that cuts a hundred thousand dollars from an eight million dollar budget. Helps our residents as much as we can, but it's not going to make or break a huge percentage in our general fund, especially when overall the taxes have been up, as y'all have noticed, year after year after year. We've not had a tax cut since I remember. The mill levy's gone down, but the tax bill's not down, which means the city's brought in more revenue every single year, and we are under some new administration. They're, they're tightening the belt and getting our accounting order, but ultimately, we just need to spend less and, and get some more economic development in to get those revenue dollars up. So, sorry, I know that that really wasn't a question for you, but it felt like that probably needed to be addressed.
Well, this is the reason why we've lost our bond rating too, correct? Because our fund balance is way below the fifteen percent.
I don't see that language, so I'm sure there's normally a variety of issues for that. That is one possibility, yes.
Does anyone have any other questions for our CPA team?
I do not.
Then I'll, yeah, hear a motion to accept his presentation in the annual audit.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
We have a motion, Councilman Schreiber, a second, from Councilman Adams. Will the first please call roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate it. Item seven, governing body considers charter ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one. I can give a little background on it if you want, because we've had some questions earlier, and then if you want to share, that's mine. So, so that was mentioned earlier. Last year's budget discussions that went on for several meetings brought about what's, what was a little bit controversial among some of our council members, and that's when I vetoed the budget. If you look in, and this isn't a new discussion that people haven't been aware of, as this has been ongoing for some time. In fact, a member of the council mentioned we need to get this, we don't think, figured out really soon. But all along, well, I'll start back before that. Before I was mayor, the mayor voted on the budget. Mayor McTaggart voted on the budget as it would come, and then our former city manager said, no, the mayor shouldn't vote on that. And so I didn't have a vote at that point. We are, on our ordinances, powers of mayor, one point zero three zero zero five, section six, reads, and that, I'm sorry, I need to go further down here. And I lost that spot on my iPad. Sorry. Anyway, that gives the, the mayor the power to veto as prescribed by the state law. So in our charter ordinance, as it already lies, the mayor has the power to veto, but it brings about a gray area where it brings the state as the state should prescribe, because when you look at the state statutes, where it's in section twelve on the Kansas Legislature page, which, which you guys can look up if you'd like, it talks about the council form of government, and it talks about the modified mayor, council, manager form of government. Correct me, guys, if I'm wrong on any of this. The council form of government, which we are not, does not allow the mayor to veto. The modified council, mayor, manager form of government does allow the mayor to veto. We're not either, and so it, it doesn't give us a clear solution. We had discussed getting a letter to the AG. A former councilman, Scott, had already written, written a letter to the AG, and the AG said he does not prefer to get involved into inner governmental disputes. He handles more on the state level. We also actually had people come to our meeting and say they, they didn't prefer us go to the AG at that point. From our city attorney and our city manager, we have heard that the cleanest way to clear up our ordinance language is to vote on it ourselves internally, clearing up the ordinance language and establishing if the mayor has that, well, keeping the mayor's right to veto in there. That's, that's already in there. So the verbiage in the packet, sorry, I need to get to the right page here, because I am still on the CPA page, has that the mayor would have the power to approve or veto any ordinance resolution or action by the city council, including but not limited to appropriation ordinances, resolutions, or actions, provided that the mayor shall not have the power to veto any ordinance resolution or action by the city council on which the mayor has passed a vote. So this would just clarify that I would have that right to veto. I will tell you that I've had multiple residents thank me personally for vetoing that budget last year, as rental taxes would have been a whole lot higher than they ended up being if we passed what was going through originally. I felt all along that was the right thing to do. It was right given to me within our ordinances, but I've been informed that we need to vote on it to just clarify, clean up that language, and, and make it clear anything is possible. Did you guys have anything that I am leaving out or misspoke on? Because I don't want to.
Well, the charter ordinance in front of you was drafted at mayor's request to provide a clear veto. It's not the, I mean, any, any form of charter ordinance could potentially resolve this, whether that be the mayor shall not have the power to veto, or the mayor shall have the power to veto, the mayor shall have the power to veto appropriation, everything but appropriation ordinances to align with three zero zero three. And so this is, I think, the first draft to come before the body. I think what I said last time we were here, when we were talking about the Attorney General's opinion, is it would be persuasive, and it would be something that I would, at that point, be able to recommend the body, you know, follow, but it still would not substitute for either a charter ordinance or a declaratory judgment action, or mandamus, or some other action in district court where you would have a court affirming the validity of any action, whether passed by a majority of the members, or passed by a majority of the members and then vetoed. And so as part of the discussion tonight, I at least wanted to open it up to say, yes, you know, this would be a, a very clear statement if passed as drafted, that the mayor has the power to veto appropriation ordinances as well. I think the current ordinance does provide that there is a, the power to veto any ordinance. I didn't see in the, at least in the ordinance passage, what the effect of that veto would, would be, even though it's generally two-thirds override, which in this case would be four-fifths of the count, the council. So there is already that in there. The, the question that was, arose last fall was that whether twelve dash three zero zero three applied. I shared my legal analysis with the council, and I think I, in public session, you know, kind of said most of it anyway, even though there hasn't been a, a legal memo to date. I also have a draft of Attorney General opinion that I've shared with the council as well, following up from last time. And so there, I guess this debate could take several different forms. My only point is that, that this is a, you know, even if you were considering two different charter ordinances, and they contradicted each other, you know, that ultimately, it's the decision of the, the governing body to determine whether a charter ordinance is passed. And then lastly, that's still subject to a petition, right of the people to submit a petition with ten percent of the electors, that then would force it to a referendum vote on whether this particular charter ordinance would be passed. So those are introductory comments, and I'm happy to answer anything else.
Mr. Nye, in your, in the statement on the packet, you said that, well, first of all, there was a consensus on the council for you to send this to the Attorney General eight months ago. Now you're saying there, well, there's not time, because the budget's here. If you would have sent that eight months ago, we might have had some sort of decision, even if he, even if he came, now, Mr. Scott, I know he petitioned them, but he's not an attorney, so they probably don't just listen to citizens, or they'd be listening, you know, every idiot who sends him a letter. So I take issue with the fact that you did not send this eight months ago like you were directed to do.
I actually said no when you asked, so there wasn't consensus.
This only takes three votes.
But nobody else said anything. And then the next time he asked, you said no.
I have the floor. I have the floor, Mayor. But so there was a three-vote consensus that, yes, send this to the Attorney General so we can get this figured out. Correct? You're shaking your head yes? Yeah. So I take issue with that. And now all of a sudden, you also said in here, in this one here, that would not be a timely receipt from the Attorney General. Whoops, sorry. Because the, if you sent it today, well, we're going to be doing our budget in the next three or four months. So of course, he's not going to rule on it in three or four months. So I just take issue with the fact that you didn't send that, and I also would like to know, why would we give up the council vote to give up the power of the majority? Because if this is what's going to happen, we're not going to be the majority anymore. This changes the entire makeup of the government in Edwardsville. And I'm totally opposed to this. I just think that, Mayor, you just want more power, and you've said that to Mr. Mathies.
I would be fine with voting like Mayor McTaggart did for all those years, but nobody had a problem with that, and that ultimately would result in the same thing. It would be one more vote from the council.
That's my question. What, why, why is it now that the mayor can't vote on the, on the budget? Why did it change? Does anybody know why?
An appropriation, when you pass a budget, it's an appropriation ordinance, and it is establishing the, through the power of the purse, the maximum that can be spent. And so pursuant to both the charter ordinance and general passage of ordinances within the statute, the mayor only casts a vote when there's a tie. And so on a vote, a three-two vote or a two-three vote, that at least pursuant to the ordinance, one point zero four, point zero zero one, passage of ordinances, says the, where the number of favorable votes is one less than required, the mayor shall have power to cast the deciding vote in favor of the ordinance. So it's the council's job to, to vote on ordinances, accept charter ordinances, at which point the governing body does in the constitutional provision, and that's two-thirds of the governing body on which the mayor has a vote. Now, if you wanted to potentially charter your way into mayor having a vote or something like that, I can certainly research that to see what's uniformly applied, but just the general separation of power of the legislative function versus the executive function, it's, the ordinances already provide that the mayor shall have the power to veto as prescribed in the laws, but that's not a power to vote unless you're serving in a quasi-judicial capacity like you were earlier tonight on the zoning issue or a charter ordinance.
So because I have the power to veto as per ordinances, that's why Mayor McTaggart at the time shouldn't have been able to vote because he had the power to veto.
I haven't looked into the ordinances at the time.
Oh, they haven't changed. They haven't changed. It was just two years.
It may have been tradition. It may have been, but whether that had any legal validity, and I would, it would be interesting to me to see if there was any, ever any situation in which that particular vote affected the ultimate outcome. Now, I, I guess theoretically, it could have been three-two, and then voting no would brought to a tie. If that were to ca, if that were the case, then I think it potentially would have been legally suspected.
And so just to, to clarify a little bit on what you're saying of the executive balance, that because I'm not voting, that's where the veto would come in. As far as the, the type of government or, or the, the majority of government, it would be the same as when Mayor McTaggart was voting, where it would take one more vote to, to go one way or another on that. It doesn't change the majority. It's still, if, if McTaggart were voting, and he was, it would take one more vote. The other way to look at that is if the mayor shouldn't even have a vote or a veto as something as important as our city budget. I mean, that's one of the biggest decisions that we made, and then you're saying the mayor, like, I don't, I don't get a vote, and so I wouldn't have a veto either. If you, if you just think about it, it doesn't make a lot of sense that I wouldn't have a vote, and I wouldn't even have the ability to veto. Why in the world would anyone want to sit in this seat? You're just giving up your vote. It, it just, it doesn't make any sense at all. So anyway, we'll bring it before the council and, and have questions if you'd like or discussion, but that's, the purpose tonight is to clarify the ordinance, make it, make it clear, because there was a gray area so that everyone at least can be on the same page moving forward.
So as confusing as this all is, have you ever voted?
Well, I voted on, like, tonight, there's certain planning.
No on the budget, or?
No. When I, when I became mayor is when all of a sudden, they decided the mayor shouldn't vote on the budget anymore. So when Mr. McTaggart was here, he could vote, but when I became mayor, all of a sudden magically that disappeared. And so we have different administration here. Our ordinances did not change, but that did.
So you're going to maybe research to see if that was a, that was not correct, or if that, this is where I'm getting.
Mike said that they shouldn't have, he, well, he shouldn't have been voting, is what Mike Webb, Mr. Webb said at the time. Mayor McTaggart shouldn't have been voting, so we're not going to be doing that any further. And as Mr. Nye explained, typically, the mayor wouldn't vote in this form of government because the mayor has the veto, and that's all we're trying to clarify tonight, is that veto.
Yeah, the current passage of ordinances, ordinance from the twenty oh five code, section one dash one zero eight, which would be amended in this charter ordinance, reads as follows, the governing body shall reads as follows, "The governing body shall have the care, management, control of the city and its finances, and shall pass all ordinances needed for the welfare of the city. All ordinances shall be valid when a majority of all the members elected of the city council shall vote in favor. Where the number of favorable votes is one less than required, the mayor shall have pow, power to cast the deciding vote in favor of the ordinance." So that is held up next to the power of the mayor to veto in, in a separate section, but it's as the law is prescribed. So the question that was posed to me last year is whether I can definitively say that KSA 12-3003, that says council cities, controls by saying, yes, the mayor has the power to veto ordinances, except appropriation ordinances. And from its plain reading, there's, I think that there's a very valid argument to be made that that could mean, you know, all the types of forms of government that include mayor council, modified mayor council, et cetera, versus a commission. That's one reading. The other reading is that, that that directly contradicts other form, other statutory language, which I pointed out in my legal analysis, which is, for example, a mayor in a modified mayor council form of government has the, clearly has the power to veto, and it does not mention appropriation ordinance. And so you've got this conflict of statutory language that I can't, I, I don't think it, you know, it's uniformly applicable because under the Article 10A, 12-10A06, it says mayor council, council right in the, right in the form of government. And so I, I can't say this applies over here and this applies over there. So that would be an argument against the idea that council cities include all of the different cities that have a council versus the commission. All that to say that it's inconclusive and the, the, the advice I gave you all at the time was, is that if you can reach consensus, reach consensus, and you did. Now we're back here again, and you have two definitive paths, which is charter your way out or seek declaratory judgment. And you also have a persuasive path, which is the attorney general opinion, which at the very least, like I said, would give me more, at least it would be published notice, and I would give you advice along the lines of the attorney general, if there's one on point.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not in this, I'm sorry. Yeah.
They did spell it out.
So what does our ordinance say right now? This has been.
The mayor shall preside at all meetings of governing body. The mayor shall have the tie-breaking vote on all questions when the members present are equally divided. The mayor shall, subsection C, have the power to approve or veto any ordinance as the laws of the state shall prescribe. And then it also says the ordinance, passage of ordinances is, shall be valid when a majority of all members elected of the city council shall vote in favor. And again, it says the mayor has the tie-breaking vote. So within your current system of government, you have these same categories that exist. And the last thing I'd say is that the city attorney, it's like a county counselor, serves as kind of the combination between the attorney general and the reviser statutes for the state of Kansas. The reviser statutes job is to draft whatever individual member of the legislature wants to come in and ask for a, something to be drafted in order for to be considered by the body. And so that is also the case here, which is if, you know, this is not the only way to do it. And so I, my phone, my email's open for, for drafting anything that the body wants to debate.
Well, I'll make the motion to adopt KS 12-3003, not letting the mayor veto appropriation ordinances.
I will second that.
Is that an ordinance that we have written up for us, too?
I just, that would be a clarification. If you're, if you're wanting it in a charter form, I'm happy to draft that, to just charter your way into the exact language of 12-3003.
And so we could vote on that, but we won't have the verbiage. And just to clarify, so what that would do, and for residents who are here this evening, is they so badly want to raise your taxes, that is, that would be, that would remove my ability to have any say at all in the budget, not even equal to a council member.
Well, it takes our power away, Mayor.
No, it doesn't. You still have your vote. You still have your vote. All it does is take away my veto.
No, this changes the form of government that we have. Correct, Mr. Nye?
It, which, the, the drafted charter ordinance would change the form of government, is your question?
Basically, yes.
It would clarify that included within the current ordinance would be any action or resolution or ordinance, including an appropriation ordinance. And so it would, it would expand the, the powers of the mayor to the point where it aligns with the, you know, similar to the state constitution where the governor has the ability to veto a bill that would require.
But that doesn't have anything to do with, we're not talking about the governor. We're talking about a little town of 4,600.
I'm, I'm not weighing in on the public policy aspect of it. I'm just saying, you, your question was about the form of government. I'm just saying that the general idea of an executive having a veto power over the legislative body, that the executive figure has a legislative role to play in, in the veto, in the passage of ordinances. And so if you were to take that away, then it would be closer to a parliamentary system where the council will pass laws and the mayor would assist in the execution of those laws.
Currently, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is it wouldn't change our form of government as I already have the veto in our ordinances?
I mean, I think you're arguing over semantics at this point, really. The form of government include, currently includes a veto, currently includes the ability to pass ordinances. I would say that it'd probably be good at some point to add in to your charter ordinance how you override a veto, because.
And that's included in this?
That would be included in this. This takes two-thirds, which would be four-fifths of the deal. But, but, I mean, that's for you to debate whether it's changing your form of government. And I think there are arguments on both sides.
So we do have a motion and a, and a second, just, just to that point, because I didn't mention that earlier when I read the mayor's power of veto. That also, that did not allow the mayor to veto anything that I'm voting on. So it doesn't allow that. And it does spell out in the ordinance that any veto can be overridden by four votes of the council. And so it's not, I think there was some confusion about that last year as well. It's not a just slam the book shut, you're done situation where it just overrides the whole vote. It can be overridden by four votes of the council in that original. But the motion in the second is saying that the mayor has the right to veto, but I could not have any say at all on the budget, including veto. And we have a motion by Councilman Bishop, a second by Councilman Malat. Will the clerk please call?
I'm so sorry. Wait a minute. Could you say that again?
So with a motion on the, on the floor right now is letting me veto, but not on the budget. So I would have no vote on the budget. I'd have no veto on the budget. I'd have no, not even the same as a council, council person on the budget right now.
The, the motion was to adopt KSA 12-3003 into our ordinances.
As a charter ordinance.
As the, as, yes, we're doing, yes, charter ordinance. That's what the motion was for.
So as it is?
No, this is a whole separate one that he's bringing tonight.
Oh.
Hold up, clerk, please. Hold on.
No.
Mullin.
No.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Mayor.
No.
Trevor.
No.
So Mayor, if I understood all the discussion, is that our city attorney has once again presented some other avenues, should you choose to go those route. And when you don't have the attorney general, then he's, he's certainly put some weight behind that as for several months now, this discussion. It's somewhat, a little late because we do have an upcoming budget cycle where, again, as we know the history, where we've had veto and that was accepted by this governing body because they moved forward with that and then making the decision. So you have, you understand what that feels and looks like. In the sense, what our common sense read into this language, because if we go back to the premise, what argument are we making? What do we want to fix? Right? So if we just box this in, we wanted to fix whether or not the mayor would have some authority, some voice over the budget. And I think the history says there was a previous mayor, not more, we just don't know, may have had some say, and that was maybe done in error. However, there was an expectation that when you sat in the chair, that you would have that voice and then was surprised by not having. So, so did we, did we solve the right problem in the language? And I don't think we did. In some way, we may have, right? Just, just my common sense approach. The mayor to have the power to approve or veto any ordinance, resolution, or action by the city council. And I think Mr. Bishop is pointing out that that sounds like, no matter what, three, four, or five of you do, that it appears that they're giving the entire authority for you to say something different than their own voice and representing the people of the community, right? That's, that's the fear, I get a sense that there's some concern about that. And you might even heard that from the, from the audience as well. So maybe looking at that, if the tone of this language, we're, we may be getting to the same place, but it sounds a little scary, maybe. I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud. But maybe it is that, maybe it would be acceptable to the body to say the annual budget, and that you would have that specific authority. We have the opposite saying, we believe the state statute, as you just voted on, on our proposal, that, that statute says you don't have that authority, and they want to adopt that. But what if we had some, you know, we come to some agreement in the sense that we vote on language that specifically says during budget time, which we accepted, and so you said on the council a long time, you accepted the process that the mayor voted previously. So based on that, maybe we could come with some language that doesn't say that you get to veto, or at least in our minds, or how it reads, maybe subject to interpretation, any action by the council, and therefore maybe erase some of the, some of the concern that this will change the form of government and there would be a strong mayor power shift, as even the audience has maybe mentioned. So that's, that's what I would suggest is maybe considering that. Again, that's just my opinion of the common sense language here.
Well, the, even if 12-3003 applies, it still reads, "The mayor of a council city shall have the power to sign or veto any ordinance passed by the council. Provided the ordinances on which the mayor casts the deciding vote and appropriation ordinances, the mayor shall have no veto, and he or she shall sign such ordinances if presented at a meeting." So there's already a broad, even under 12-3003, a broad ability to veto any ordinance. The one I read earlier, the 12-10A06, says, "The mayor shall sign all ordinances and resolutions passed by the council, except that the mayor shall have the power to veto any ordinance or resolution passed by the council, except a charter ordinance." So I don't, this is the time to decide, I think, the entire scope of what you want to limit the mayor to, or not limit the mayor to, because I think the general idea within the statutes, even the one that has been of such debate, which is 12-3003, still has a broad veto authority. And that requires three-fourths, I'm sorry, five, five members of the council to override. So I, I definitely hear, anytime we can narrow the issue, we should. If it's just to get past a budget cycle, but I do think that there's potentially a very broad veto base already. The only question is whether that excludes appropriation.
In 12-3003, it's not broad. It's definite, it's in language that any ordinary citizen can read and understand. It says no veto power on appropriation ordinances. I don't know much how clear it can get.
My, my point on broad was that it's, it's not like there's no veto power at all. It's veto on everything else, except charter and except.
Right.
Those, appropriation ordinances. So it's in the context of a general veto power that's limited.
And 12-10A06 says the mayor shall sign all ordinances and resolutions passed by the council, except that the mayor shall have the power to veto any ordinance or resolution passed by the council, except a charter ordinance, or except a charter ordinance. And so they conflict, which is why we're having this discussion to clear it up among our council. So I will just ask, and if we need to, to table it, do we have any motion to approve charter ordinance 2024-01, or do we need to move on from that?
Let me make a motion to table this.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Bishop to table. The second is from Councilman Malat. Will the clerk please call him?
Yes.
Mullin.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Mayor. Yes. Trevor.
Yes.
Item eight, here a presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. I had one more question on seven because there was some confusion about that. And going through it for the AG's opinion, I believe you said you wanted full governing body support to go on behalf of the governing body or?
No, I, I mean, that was in the memo, I, I don't think I've ever said that since there was a consensus. I was just saying that it was directed and then I had a draft. It would never came back up on the agenda when it was brought up. I circulated that draft. And if, if there's a, if you want me to send it, I could, I'll send it as, I mean, usually what I would do is I'd say, here's what I'm, the questions I'm asking. If there's anything else to ask, or if you want me to ask it in a different way, I need guidance.
We'll just get on it since we tabled it, that that I think was some confusion. So I wanted to clarify. Here a staff presentation on 2024.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council. We'll call on the Public Works team, which is Doug Gerber and Brian Hutcheson. Brian's going to come up and, if you haven't met him yet, he's been around for a little while. He's done a great job. Brian Hutcheson is our public works supervisor, works out in the field, and is a long-serving street maintenance supervisor, has a lot of knowledge, and he's worked with assistant city manager to get the finance piece of this kind of, at least on the board. And then they formulated a strategy to then return with some bid documents there, again, which is the way I kind of like to do it. I like to go out and say, what will they do this work for? So we have some more firm numbers that we can present to you relative to speculation. So I'll turn it over to Brian Hutcheson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. How are you? I thought everybody was here to hear me speak, but they all got a terrible thing. So I was like, okay, I guess they weren't here for me. But anyway, as Mark talked about, we've been through discussion on the 24 street maintenance work that we'd like to do for the city. Most of these, these. Most of these, these six topics right here are basically all across the board on street maintenance repair. Protecting the street, rebuilding the street, maintaining streets as well. I've identified through multiple trips around the city, looking at the overall condition of the city's streets and infrastructure, went back and took double shots. These are the key six that I came up with, is we have quite a few shoulders out there that need shoulder repair. Shoulder repair is valuable to your streets to keep them in good condition. If your shoulders aren't good, the sides of your streets are going to fail, and I do see some of that. As well as some base repairs. Some of our streets are in need of some base repair, some more than other. But making, taking care of that base repair, so it doesn't spread on and go in farther into that section of the street. Also, streets that need to be rebuilt in place. A lot of our plan here is, is to put money into streets that still have value in them, so they'll last longer. But then also putting some of that money into streets that are no longer in a condition to maintain, that you just need to rebuild. Several of those are milling overlays, taking just off the top two inches off asphalt and giving it a new wear service on top to add that length to it. A lot of the pavement markings that I've seen across the city are inadequate, is that you can't see, may not have the reflectivity of something like that, which brings up safety for the general public and traffic going through there. So we've identified some places there as well, and also parking lots. We can never forget about our own city assets that we have in our infrastructures, where our parking lots, while these parking lots are seen by our residents, if not visitors, to the community as well. It gives a look of how the city really is. Pavement markings, as you see in this list here, these are, these are basically the main corridors that are going through the city of Edwardsville that I've identified that could use some striping to help enhance the safety of the general public driving in there. Estimated cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars to get those stripings in adequate condition to see while you're traveling through the streets. Rebuilding in place, very popular idea of how to get streets in a condition that are going to last considerably longer than if you just go in there and place something over the top of it, either chip seal or ready, and just a two-inch layer over the top. A lot of times you want to rebuild that in place because that builds the base, it's more infrastructure into the base and builds it up, so it will stand. I'm guessing some of these streets that are in Edwardsville are probably just a two-inch layer of asphalt put on the dirt. They didn't have the rebuild capabilities back when these streets were built. Even when I started my career, this is something new. This has come out, it's been proven to really help out a lot, and also reduces the cost down by being able to rebuild it in place. Two of those areas are a hundred and second from K thirty-two to Edge Hill, and then Newton Street, Fourth Street to Ninth Street. Estimated expense of about nine hundred thousand there. Milling overlay, of course, this is the most favorite with the residents. It's basically taken off the two inches of asphalt and a bit new on top of it. Some streets qualify for that, depending on what their depth is, or even what the condition of the asphalt is. These areas have been identified for milling overlay or edge hill between a hundred and fourth to a hundred and second. Edwardsville Drive, a hundred and fourth streets to Speaker, Coons Lane, and Edge Hill Road, Overbrook, and a hundred and fourth street. And it gets made a cost of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that. This does not address any base structure. These streets do not show any base failure in that. So that's what gives them a good candidate for just a small milling overlay. Shoulder repair. Shoulder repair is, is the life of your street. It keeps the moisture from getting on that edge in truck traffic or car traffic that unravels that edge and breaks it off. Two of the worst areas that we've seen here are Ninety-Eighth Street from K thirty-two to Wood End, and then Edwardsville Drive, the spot, your spot areas up and down through there, that not necessarily needs a whole construction on the shoulder, but isolated areas where either mail jeeps or P O Bs have run off and are causing it to rot, which has caused it to break off. It's essentially going to make that street even smaller as possible. Base repair. Overall, pretty good base repair around, on through here. One area was identified, a hundred and fifth and Overbrook, with an estimated cost of about a thousand dollars to fix that face. You can see the picture that area there. It's a good street. It's been sealed. It's helping the water situation by having it sealed, but there is, I think, one or two areas in this area that have a base failure for whatever reason, for actual truck traffic, who knows? But there is two areas that identify to get that street back up to par. And then our parking lots. One of the first things we, we usually do is we always forget about our infrastructure that we own. Here's three parking lots here that are in desperate need, some rejuvenation to them. The community center, as you've been over there to look at it, has some beer cracking in it, but it has probably one of the busiest buildings that the city has. And of course, the city park, the city park probably addresses most of our residents, and even a lot of visitors, visitors come down to the park down there. It helps dress it up, plus it also gives its strength back in that, where it's going to last another ten to fifteen years. And then the city hall, police department down here, we, we all see the parking lot out there when we came in today. This cost is going to be somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to maintain those parking lots to get them to a certain condition. Funding, that's, that's where we come in, where we're going to get this funding at. Combination of funding sources, special highway funds, cash balance, and C I F I revenue, and then temporary note proceeds as well. What's next? We're going to, we'd like to bid the twenty twenty-four project list, see what that price is, get council's approval in June. After that, we're looking to hire outside consultants to help us determine the PCI, which is the Payment Condition Index Table. They'll come in and look at our streets and give them a rating, which will help us identify a plan, long-range plan, five-year, seven-year plan, on looking at all these streets and being in other categories and pick out which ones we want to grab and pull and choose. But the confidence of having them coming to do it this first round, so we can assure what we've got, and then as we go farther into it, we'll get involved with it and do it ourselves, you know, make those choices. Then we'll build a twenty twenty-five project list, add the C I P to the council for the fall of twenty twenty-four. You'll be seeing me up here in June, maybe you'll see me up here in February, getting the start of it a little bit quicker to get in there and get the projects done. So we look to have our bids next projects early twenty twenty-five.
Didn't V H C Roads do a road assessment about four years ago? Didn't they? Three, four years ago?
We have a road assessment, but we just are not confident in the timeline of it or the completeness of it.
Yeah, but I mean, just, we had one like, was it four years ago?
Pacer.
Pacer, the Pacer ratings.
Was it that?
Pacer and PCI are somewhat interchangeable. Brian and I are both familiar with PCI, but they're, it's a rating system for streets.
That's just too old.
Yes.
I am, and I will say, I know we did have the Pacer rating. I don't know, it was a handful of years ago, but I know what was very helpful here in the city of Edwardsville. You have a lot of people that drive on different roads, and this road is bad, and this road is bad, and this road is bad. And then they see that road getting worked on. Why are they working on that? Well, when we had that rating, we published it, so people could see. I mean, it wasn't just us saying, oh, let's start on this one. You know what, you understand what I'm saying? So, and if that is available, it would be good for the public to see that, and it helps out. It helps out, probably calls to the city hall and whatnot. Does that make sense, or?
Yes, yes, you are correct. You know, what you look at on the PCI rating is, it gives you a rating of what the street is, identifying, you know, how long it's going to last. But it also helps you identify some other avenues to go take care of a street. Basically, your PCI, you want to see a street in the seventy or above. If you see one at fifty, fifty's kind of telling you, you know, you might want to throw a little bit of money at me to get me to seventy, because I'm going to last another ten years if you do. And seeing those streets are actually in that forties and thirties, yeah, we need to rebuild those, but if we rebuild everything we have, we can't maintain what we do have, and sooner or later, we'll be in a big hole where we don't have enough money for anything.
Brian, had you considered Wood End Road from Ninth Street to four thirty-five? Industrial, from the Riverfront Park all the way?
Yes, there, there's some, I think part of that shore repair down in there is based on often that, and that it's rough. Yeah. A lot of that roughness down there is also being addressed with Call Valley and some of the stuff that they're doing down there.
They need to sweep it when they dump their loads.
They, they, they need to sweep it and do, do some.
I've mentioned that more than once.
Yeah.
And I also appreciate that you mentioned the parking lots for the community center is a shambles right now. We've, I asked for it to be sealed and striped two or three times in the last couple of years, and the city parks the same way. I think they're, they should be showcased, especially with the painting that's been done, the improvements that have been made down. I think that ought to be kind of a priority. That's about two cents worth.
Is there any way of grinding down some of the speed bumps on Edwardsville Drive? You know, because when they did that, you know, it's concrete, it's a concrete base.
There is some of that, figured into that.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was in the spot, spot repairs. Yeah, that, you, you bring up a key point. That's a concrete base there, and that's where all the joints are in the concrete that end up letting water back through and popping back in. When I first counted, I counted the number, and then when I went back the second time, that number grew. So I don't know if I missed it on the first time, or if it's actually growing that quick. But yes, that, I believe that has taken a lot of the milling overlay, it's going to take in those spot, spot repair in that, with that street only having the concrete underneath there. The proper rebuild it is to get rid of the concrete, which is expensive. So it would be a spot repair on that, on that street.
No, it's lasted since two thousand, what, nine or ten, something like that. We get our life out of it.
As, as far as the data goes, council, that PCI or Pacer data, however we rate our streets, we've seen a little bit of both of that data. But when we go and apply that, go out to an actual street, it's not accurate. It's a little dated now. We did, we did commission V H C to do some work, and they commissioned a retired person that was an expert in that, drove every street. There's some new technology. PCI data that we have, the county did that some, a few years ago, and provided that data. Even that has kind of somewhat expired, it's not accurate. We have a low confidence level in that information, and therefore, we're sending our, our resident expert now. Clearly, there's no streets, and we're getting, you know, our eyes on it. What, what we think is be very beneficial to put any capital improvement plan together is having new data, right? Maybe there's some technology we can get, or when we're driving around, we can film our streets, and then there's a way, you know, the cloud can compute kind of things and do some stuff. But we need it done professionally, new. We need it done that way, so that we can have these maps and show, hey, this is the reason behind this particular street and why we're addressing it in this particular fashion. So I think you spoke a little bit to that, but I think Assistant Manager, also, we're seeing data we're not confident in. And so we'd like to kind of start, start to do it.
Okay. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager, report.
The only thing, I'm just adding on to this presentation, so we just got an understanding. We're not spending one, four million dollars, right? At this point, what we want to do is go out for bids, we want to get, we want to throw these on our list, and then we might have to whittle down, more than likely, and then we just pick the priorities. So our suggestion, what your ideas are as well, so that we have a picture of actually where we're going to spend the money from, what kind of money that we're going to spend, and what we're going to accomplish with that particular money. So that's, that's the next one. That's all.
Councilman Mullin.
So I would love personally like to thank Chief Quinn. It'd be a pleasure working with you again. So congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd also like to congratulate the Hundred and Fourth Street Sidewalk Group for coming out. Thank you for showing support there. That was one of my big issues, is trying to get sidewalks within this city, because I think it's very important for our community. Because I myself walk on a hundred and tenth street, and it's very dangerous, and I would like to see sidewalks even extend up that far. And then finally, I'd like to thank Mayor Kahar. Everything she does for the city, I don't think you guys realize. You guys don't know this, but she gets out there and she does a food pantry. It was eighty degrees, and they were shorthanded the other day. And then I can't imagine, maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred cars. And it's a lot. And so she has the best interests of these citizens in their pocketbooks. And so I know this meeting probably didn't reflect that, but she does. So I wish you guys to keep that in consideration. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, the paint on the community center looks really good. Good job, Chantel. Oh, did you?
Did you paint it, Chantel?
I don't have any idea what color it is, but it looks good. And Mayor, I don't want to raise anybody's taxes. My taxes are one of the highest in this group. I know that Mr. Mullin, there's a lot of percent in our tax. My taxes push over ten grand. I don't want to raise anybody's taxes because it affects me too. I just think it's a, you know, we just need to have a, have this worked out, so we don't have this argument every spring, or whatever. So that's it.
I have nothing.
Yes, I would like to congratulate and welcome our new chief of police. Nice to meet you, and it looks like you're lovely family with you. This is what a meeting to come to. We have a lot of good conversations up here. We have a lot of issues we talk about, but at the end of the day, we, you know, all here for the best of the city. And I am glad, and I'd like to thank all the citizens that came in regards to the sidewalk. I think you, Cheryl, from Ninety-Eighth Street, even coming from Ninety-Eighth Street, kudos to you. I, the sidewalks were years on end, promotes health, safety, and community. It just, you can't go wrong with the sidewalks, and I think that we, as a council, I know we've all been in agreement with it, and, and what better way to do this and not even burden the community with the dollar bill for this particular sidewalk? And the partnership with the school and helping us out. I know it's going to be a utilized sidewalk. I think the, the point is, we're trying to connect the whole city, which we will at one, one point. I'd also like to thank Mr. Hutcheson, all your efforts on the city. They're, they're just, I, I know that there's been comments and from mowing to different things we have asked. I know I have asked, and you've gotten them done, along with the city manager. Thank you very much. All those little bitty things that make a big difference. And see everybody Saturday. My favorite day of the year, so. Citywide cleanup. Eight o'clock, everybody going to be here?
Eight AM, sharp.
Eight AM. I'll bring donuts. I always do. I'm bringing donuts, yes. Oh, you tell her. No, I bring them. Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Mayor Kahar, for organizing the Harvester's Mobile Food Pantry. She's done that at, over four years now. I enjoy helping out, meet the community. It is a lot of hard work, but it's a lot of fun when you get together with people to do that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just congratulations to the new chief of police and your family. That's it.
We'll wrap it up pretty quick. It's been a little bit of a long-term meeting tonight. We did have a fantastic Edwardsville Mobile Pantry event on Saturday. I always like to take an opportunity to thank our great volunteers. We were a little bit shorthanded with people out of town, but they just showed up and, and we have a great, great crew that wholeheartedly loves serving our community. And so I always want to take an opportunity to thank the people for that. We have served over two hundred families this last Saturday groceries. And the stories that come through of the people in those lines just always motivate me to come back another time, because there are people that are definitely in need here in our community, and so it's such a, just an honor to serve them. Congratulations to our new chief of police. We're, we're excited to have you. And I, I think we got a couple of probably mixed messages this evening with the charter ordinance, being that we've, we voted on appropriate, or we voted on appropriations in the past, vetoed appropriations in the past. A vote came across to strike veto of appropriations, and that didn't pass. And so we'll take some time, take a break, and try to make a solution that'll work for everybody. Until next time, have a great evening.
I need trash.
I can't imagine.
I know, man. I yelled at people. I went after tomatoes and stuff. I went after him, said, "Card, tomato and stuff." When my daughter's playing, I just did the whole thing and I went after him. Then he, then he said something, he said something, and then I went inside and put my 45 on my head. Man, he's probably a redneck, you know?
Was he going down to the hall? But was he staying there?
I don't know because he came down about 50, he came back dead, we did eight, and then he came back about 60 or something. And then the second time, the third time, and he came back his fourth time, he might have been to the third.